Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District and also Councilmember Christopher Burnett from the 8th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. And also, we have our committee staff, Trey Hayes. Before we get started, just asking everyone to please take a moment to turn off or silence your cellphone. Today, we're going to be hearing two bills. The first hearing is for Council Bill 23-0418 Tobacco Products: Tobacco Product Use in Stadiums. We have also been joined by Councilmember Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. And that bill is for the purpose of prohibiting the use of tobacco products in stadiums, defining certain terms, establishing certain penalties, and providing for a special effective date. At this time, we are going to hear from the sponsor of the bill. Councilmember Burnett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. So this bill is just a pretty common sense public health measure to reduce both the exposure for young people at sporting events to these type of tobacco products, setting, you know, just trying to make sure we're setting good examples. It is a, the right step at the right time. We're joining, I believe, 16 other cities in taking this step to ban this type of product from being used at sporting events so that, you know, we have a healthier city. You know, the Clean Indoor Act in Maryland, I know I butchered that, it was passed a few years ago, was a huge step to making sure that we have quality air and reducing things like asthma and other airborne-related illnesses that come from the use of tobacco products. And this is putting us a step further in partnering with our sports facilities. We have support from the Orioles, who, and Heart Association, and a number of other very important stakeholders who really care about this issue and want our team to be that shining example for young people. And I'll just give one anecdote that when I introduced this bill, I had a constituent who read about it and was like, hey, you know, I just want to say that I started chewing smokeless tobacco watching baseball games. And, you know, for me, it was just like something that I thought was, was cool, watching my favorite player do it in the dugout. And I thought this was important, thought it was an important bill because he was like, you know, it took me a while to break the habit. And it was a harmful habit for that person. And so, for me, it was just sort of bridge the gap. Obviously, I knew firsthand that the impacts of tobacco products can have on young people, particularly, you know, folks who are, when it's connected to someone that you admire doing it. So we've seen the stuff in films and in sports for a long time. But it was also just important to hear that, like, hey, you know, taking it away and raising that awareness is important for young adults. And so, it was important to hear, and I just wanted to lift that up, that this is, for me, not often that your bills have an immediate person that says, hey, I've experienced this or hey, you know, I'm excited you're doing this because it's something that impacted me personally. And so, I just wanted to lift that up, that there are people watching, there are young people watching our, our baseball team, our football, our athletes generally, and we should be encouraging them to be good examples. And again, this is a pretty good public health measure that is the best practice that other jurisdictions have lifted up all across the country. And again, I want to thank our wide array of support, supporters, some of which we're going to hear from today, Madam Chair, on why this matters, from both a public health perspective and good governance perspective. And so, with that, I'll hand it back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett. We are going to hear from agencies next, and then we're going to have a few members who are presenting for a panel, who are going to come up and give us some more information about the bill. We'll start with the, as far as agencies, we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, and we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And the Health Department?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director for the Baltimore City Health Department, and I am accompanied by my colleague Jessica Speaker, who is the Assistant Commissioner for our Environmental Health Bureau. We are in favor of this bill, as the sponsor has already discussed. Exposure to secondhand smoke and nicotine and tobacco products have a wide array of negative health impacts, in particular, among children and pregnant people. So our maternal and child health and asthma program, subject matter experts are supportive of this bill, as is the agency as a whole. And we are here to answer questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move to the panel. Mr. Kevin Flaherty?
Good morning, Madam Chair, other members of the committee. I wanted to thank you first for the opportunity to testify today in support of Council Bill 23-418, an ordinance regarding tobacco product use in stadiums.
And I'm sorry to cut you off. Can you state just your first and last name, and if you're with an organization, just for the record? Thank you.
Certainly, and that was my next line, so you felt it coming. My name is Kevin O'Flaherty, and I'm leading the effort to knock tobacco out of the park for the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. We are so glad to be here with several partners from Baltimore City who support this proposal, including the Orioles. For too long, we have all witnessed the impact of smokeless tobacco use by Major League Baseball players on our nation's youth. As countless studies have shown, ballplayers aren't just indulging in a harmless habit when they use smokeless tobacco on the field. They're damaging their health with an addictive product that causes cancer and other serious diseases. But by serving as role models to youth throughout Baltimore and the country, they're also endangering the well-being of millions of kids who look up to them and copy their every move. Every time a player uses tobacco at a game or on TV, that's a free ad for the tobacco companies to reach their prime target: kids. Year after year, it amounts to literally hundreds of millions of dollars of free advertising that reinforces the tobacco industry's message that tries to tie an addictive substance to culture, a sporting excellence, or a way of life. Every child that sees this real-life product endorsement unfortunately also sees it inextricably linked to the heroic on-field actions of their idols. Whenever a little, a young fan or a little league player sees a big league player using smokeless tobacco, baseball ends up promoting it for free. Over the last 20 years, the public health community has made dramatic progress reducing smoking rates among our kids, cutting cigarette use by more than half among high school boys. But during the same period, there has been far less progress in reducing the use of smokeless tobacco in the same demographic, especially among those who participate in organized sports. Sadly, baseball shares some of the blame for this problem. Analysis by the CDC and others shows that while high school athletes smoke at much lower rates than non-athletes, they use smokeless tobacco at nearly twice the rate of students who are not engaged in sports. And you may, you may be surprised to know that this problem isn't just confined to young men. Young women athletes also use smokeless tobacco products at much higher rates than non-athletes. Involvement in sports should lead kids to a healthier future and not double their rates of tobacco use, as well as their chances of developing an addiction that could last a lifetime. Today, you can help change that. If Baltimore passes this measure, we are all going to see healthier young kids, and eventually, adults as well, who no longer associate tobacco use of any kind with their heroes. Finally, it's important to note that a prohibition on tobacco use within sports facilities will not affect what players do in their personal lives. This ordinance is about making sure that players and other role models, Umps, refs, coaches, when they're on the job, on the field, and in front of a camera, set the right example for kids. While we hope that players will use this policy and as an opportunity to quit using tobacco for their own health, that is not what the policy is about. It's about protecting kids. And that fact is probably why the vote in nearly every city we've worked to pass this policy has been unanimous. There was one in New York City that passed it 47 to 4, but other than that, unanimous votes in every city across the country. This is a common sense policy to protect our kids where they thrive on sporting fields while they're trying to improve their health, become competitive athletes, and learn teamwork with their peers. Our campaign to knock tobacco out of the park has already made an impact on baseball by leading to changes in the collective bargaining agreement that has made tobacco-free baseball a question of when, not if. 16 cities, including three of the four other teams in the AL East, already have policies in place that prohibit the use of tobacco products in this entire stadium. Right now, we think we are on the verge of reaching a tipping point where the league and the Players Association will agree to do something that would have seemed impossible a decade ago, eliminating the use of tobacco in all games throughout the league. Baltimore, with its storied tradition and millions of fans across the country, is poised to make that happen. With your help, we believe we can achieve that goal before the next CBA is approved in 2026. We are grateful to Counselor Chris Burnett and the seven cosponsors who helped introduce this measure, and we are proud to join you and countless other leading health advocates in support of this legis, the legislation that will prohibit, once and for all, the use of smokeless tobacco at all organized sporting events in Baltimore City. Providing this protection for our kids from an industry that is not beneath using their heroes to get them addicted is long overdue. This ordinance is just about the health and future of our children, and we urge its prompt passage. Thank you again, and I'm happy to answer any questions about either the policy here in Baltimore or any of the other policies that have been passed across the country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dr. Galiat-Satos. If you could state your first and last name, and also, if you're with an organization. First, please, thank you.
Of course. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, committee, and to the city of Baltimore for allowing me to be here. My name is Panagies Galiat-Satos. I'm an Associate Professor at the Johns Hopkins School of Medicine. I'm a pulmonary and critical care doctor, and I am the Director of the Tobacco Treatment Clinic at Baltimore, at Johns Hopkins. In addition, I am a son of Baltimore, born and raised on Ponca Street over in Highland Town, to two union parents, one as a seamstress, one as a painter. The reason why that's important is because it influenced me as an adult to start Johns Hopkins's first-ever tobacco treatment clinic. All of those men and women that built the city, even made the Ravens' first-ever uniforms, many of them have died because of tobacco. And starting the Tobacco Treatment Clinic, the average age of the patients I see is about 50 or 60 years of age. About a third of those patients use smokeless tobacco. And what they all have in common is that they all began using the product as youth, right? The average age of smokeless tobacco usage that was initiated in our clinic was 14. And if you ask them, why? Because it was cool, right? Children, the contagion part of smokeless tobacco, just like all the other tobacco products, combustible, electronic, the contagion pool of these products is its influence, its pure usage, and the fact that it can look cool. We didn't achieve the lowest tobacco usage in kids in two, in the mid, in the early 2000s because of good doctors like myself or public health measures. It was because we removed tobacco out of movies, removed it out of commercials, it wasn't influencing kids, right? And that's how we got reduced. Where we're at now, in 2024, the la, the last remainder of seeing tobacco products being used, specifically, smokeless tobacco, a lot of it is in our athletes. A lot of it is evident when you're sitting, sitting there being filmed, as we heard earlier. So as a physician, why does this matter to me, as a physician and as a son of Baltimore? What matters were two things. Smokeless tobacco won't harm that 14-year-old, that 15-year-old. It won't kill them, but it will create them as patients 40 years later. I mean, that's the harm of tobacco products, right? It is an insidious, slow trail to becoming a patient. And those patients I see in my clinic are suffering from oropharyngeal cancers, where their nose may have been sliced off, they have a tracheostomy. Their plea is they wish they could go back in time to stop that younger self. It impacts health tremendously. And I say this because the contagion part is what we're trying to achieve here. You all are trying to prevent a generation of new patients. And the only way you can do that is by removing any influence kids may have to seeing these products being used, being used by people that we have informally placed as saying, these are leaders, these are representatives of you and this city. So making Camden Yards smokeless, tobacco-free is a massive step for you all to protect the next generation of leaders and to prevent them from coming to physicians such as myself, where we're not only not diagnosing them with cancers and talking about loss of life, but we're also discussing with them in a manner where they feel stigmatized and judged that they wish they could have prevented this generations earlier. So with that said, I plead with you all as a physician and as a son of Baltimore to help us pass this. I promise you, this will create a healthier Baltimore to promote the best of its citizens and of its leaders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to thank you both, and thank you, Councilmember Burnett, for bringing a panel to provide us with more information as well. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for questions or any comments. It's gonna, we're going to start with Councilmember Burnett.
Well, I didn't have anything, Madam Chair. I think, I mean, I'm thankful for our panel, for providing more information on the public health impacts of this. Thank you.
Members of the committee, did you have any questions? Okay, what we're going to do is recess this hearing briefly, and we'll come back after Okay, so we're going to move to our second hearing, which is Council Bill 23-0465 Tree Removal on City Property: Permits and Procedure. For the purpose of establishing certain standards and requirements for authorized tree removal along certain rights of way, requiring that the Department of Recreation and Parks approve any tree removal on land operated by the department, specifying the procedure for tree removal mitigation on land operated by the Department of Recreation and Parks, conforming, clarifying, and correcting related provisions, defined in certain terms, and generally relating to the removal of trees on certain city properties. At this time, we're going to hear from the bill sponsor, and that's going to be Councilmember Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for calling, hearing, getting an opportunity to get this through. So for nearly two decades, Baltimore City Rec and Parks has required inch-for-inch caliber replacement for healthy trees removed from public parks and public streets. This bill aims to codify the mitigation requirements for tree removal in the rights of way and on parkland, exactly as it is already practiced today. The current code does not specify any details on replacement and allows for fines to be administered when trees are removed without a permit or approval. So we're looking, we're aiming to fix that here. So adding the mitigation requirement to the code will make permanent the, the agency's longstanding policy of tree replacement. And additionally, it aligns with the city's code and the state's roadside tree permit, which requires replacement during the removal of otherwise healthy trees. And if this code change is not adopted, we are open to legal challenges for charging mitigation fees. So this is something that we need to do, and looking forward to moving this bill forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to hear from representatives from our city agencies, and then there will be an opportunity for committee members to ask any questions that they may have about the bill. We're going to start with the Office of Sustainability.
They're coming over, Madam Chair. They're across the hall. I told them that this, we were starting this hearing now, they should be walking in.
Okay, and do you mind, and for everyone who's speaking, can you just state your first and last name and the agency that you're with, just for the record?
Yes. Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office of Government Relations.
Okay, we'll come back to the Office of Sustainability. The Department of Recreation and Parks? Department of Finance?
Gabriel Stewart-Zykoitz, Department of Finance. We do not oppose, or we expect a little fiscal impact from this measure.
City Solicitor's Office?
Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor, and we approve this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, we're going to see some faces, so we'll go to the Department of Recreation and Parks for their agency report.
I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Rec and Parks on the Legislative Liaison, and we stand by our report.
Okay, we're going to go to the Office of Sustainability, and then we have a presentation from our Forestry Department. Office of Sustainability, please.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Ava Richardson, Sustainability Director. The Office of Sustainability supports this bill as it advances goals to protect and preserve our tree canopy across the city, as well as advancing the tree canopy, as we have a goal to achieve a 40% tree canopy coverage over the next few years. We stand by our report and are ready to answer any questions about the bill.
Thank you. We are currently working on, through some technical issues right now. So we are going to work out the presentation that's going to come. I'm going to recess this hearing, and we are going to actually reconvene our first hearing that we started with, which was Council Bill 23-0418 Tobacco Products: Tobacco Product Use in Stadiums at this time. And is there a motion to move this bill as favorable?
So...
Okay, so we have a motion to move by Councilman Dorsey and a second by Councilman Conway. We will be taking a vote at this time. I am McCray. I'm a yes. Councilman, Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer is absent. Councilwoman Porter is absent, and Councilwoman Torrance is absent. The motion has passed. This bill will be placed on second reader at the next council meeting. We are going to recess this bill at this time. We're now going to reconvene. Now, back to our second hearing, and that's going to be Council Resolution 23-0465 Tree Removal on City Property: Permits and Procedures. And we are briefly waiting for a presentation. Thanks for your patience, and please bear with us. We're going to recess for about two to three minutes. Okay, so we're reconvening. Council Resolution 23-0465 Tree Removal on City Property: Permits and Procedure. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. We are going to hear from our Forestry Division at this time.
For those who don't know, me, my name is Matt Rescott. I'm Plans and Inspections Coordinator for the Forestry Division of the Department of Recreation and Parks, here to give an overview of Council Bill 23-0465 Tree Removal on City Property. Okay. Apologies for not having the presentation, or the ability to put it up, but, so just for an overview, this is to codify a longstanding departmental policy that requires mitigation for tree removal, both in parkland and also in our city street right-of-way. So just a little bit of history on the policy that we're looking to codify. For at least the last 15 years, we have required mitigation on an inch-for-inch basis on tree removals on parkland and on our city streets. And even going back beyond 15 years, we had a similar policy where we were doing STEM for STEM. So for probably the last 20 years. Back in 2018, the city formed a Tree Ordinance Committee, which worked on a variety of different legislations. The first one was the Updates to the Forest Conservation Act, which happened a few years ago. Since that time, this is one of the projects that the committee's been working on. So we've actually been working on getting this legislation to this point for probably four years now. Yeah, it's been a journey. So just like specifics, it is inch-for, we are, this is, our policy is inch-for-inch replacement. That can happen by planting trees. In cases where we cannot replant trees, we can also accept a fee in lieu. And that fee in lieu is based on the city's contract for tree planting, so the cost to plant a two-inch tree. So that's how we, we base that cost. Ideally, trees are just being replanted, though, and we don't have to go to that next step. We do require mitigation for all street trees, even down to the one- and two-inch trees that were just planted. And the reason for that is that many of those street trees are actually planted using mitigation dollars themselves. So it's important that we actually replace those. Park trees, it's eight inches and above, or trees that were deliberately planted as part of other mitigation efforts. So it could be smaller trees, but generally, we're looking at eight-inch and above. With regard to permits for tree removals, we already do issue permits. That can be done in an individual way. Say, if BG&E needs to remove a tree for utility reason, it can also be done in the form of a construction plan sign-off, where our department may sign off on a plan, usually for larger projects within parkland, or maybe larger streetscape projects that are impacting a lot of street trees. We also do reviews and approvals through the city's BCNR system, which is an online kind of document management system that DPW started, and we do street tree review and approvals through that. Had some cool pictures. Had some cool pictures of some projects and some stuff where we have had to assess a lot of mitigation that you can't see, but I think that's generally the gist of this. I do want to emphasize that this is codifying existing departmental policy, something that we had in place for a long time, and other agencies are familiar with this and have been following this. So I think with that, that's what I was going to say, so. That's it.
Thank you. We've heard from our agencies. We're going to move on to questions from the committee. And we'll start with the bill sponsor, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions, just to sort of comment, you know, Matt mentioned earlier, we've been working on this bill for four years. Feels like longer. So happy to see us finally get here and looking forward to, you know, putting this into the code. I think it's a really important step for the city and hopefully will help us substantially increase our tree canopy and maybe set a sort of standard for others to follow. So appreciate, you know, the support of the committee and you for calling the hearing. Thank you.
Councilmember Bullock?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Just again, obviously, in support, but I'm curious about any potential challenges or obstacles that you may see in terms of achieving the goal.
Challenges or obstacles for getting the bill passed?
Once we're passed, I mean after the fact, yes.
Um, no. And a big part of, like, in developing this bill, we really were trying to focus just on codifying what we're already doing. So we're not trying to create processes for external people, like the people doing the projects. We're also trying not to create more stuff for ourselves also. So, I mean, from our perspective, this is business as usual, and really, nothing would change. It's just that now it's, our policy is going to be codified, so it's stronger and it's protected. And I think it will help even more. I mean, we've had certainly some projects, trees are removed and there's nothing we can do about it, but we've also engaged on a number of projects with DOT and other agencies where we've actually reduced the amount of proposed tree removal, like say on a streetscape project, and able to come up with ways to work around the removal of trees, simply because they didn't want to have to do the amount of mitigation that would have been required by our policy. So, so to me, this really did strength, strengthens our policy by making it into the code.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey. Do you have any questions?
So can you just give me a practical kind of readout on what would happen in this constituent case that just came to me like three weeks ago? I was knocking on somebody's door on Walther, and they have a genko tree in front of their house that drops huge amounts of mess onto the sidewalk every year, and I was just like, this tree sucks. I don't like having to clean this up. People don't like walking over this tree, like all, everything that it drops. I'd gladly cut this tree down myself and replace it with two other more desirable trees, more desirable species if I can, if I can. Can I get a permit to do that? And I asked forestry, and the answer was no. I can't, no. We're not going to let you do that because...
Is it a street tree or is it?
It's a city street tree.
It's a city tree.
It's planted by the city.
Hmm. That's a good question.
I will replace this tree with one that the city prefers as a species, if you just let me.
We don't want to plant that variety of genko. We're not supposed to. Like, that generally shouldn't be happening. It shouldn't have happened for a long time. I think there's probably occasional mix-ups in nursery industry and you get the female variety of the tree, but like, that generally is to be avoided, but I guess that it still happens, so I'd...
Yeah. He has it correct. A genko tree does not demonstrate its gender, doesn't have fruit for about 14 years. So usually, you don't even have a small genko out there with fruits. And of course, this is not necessarily the bill, as he was told, you cannot get a permit for that. So if the bill was passed, it would still be in the hands of the city arborist. It can be decided that that is something wrong with health, safety, wealth, public welfare is, would be that genko. And the city arborist could certainly allow that tree to be removed and replaced. So the bill does not change that fact. Did I say that right?
Sure. This codify, I think this codifies a framework within which the arborist can permit that, whereas right now, it's not exactly codified.
This, this codifies the mitigation requirement for, so the replacement of trees when they're cut down. That's what this is codifying. We are, the jurisdiction over the trees already exists within our agency.
Okay.
Like, this wouldn't change that.
So the city could today allow this guy to take this tree down, issue a permit to do this, and say, but you have to do this?
Potentially.
Yes. Yeah. You know, trees that are dead, no mitigation. Trees that are almost dead, no mitigation. Situations like this one, yes, the city could decide it's, it is a problem with public welfare and go ahead and allow him to remove it.
My understanding is generally, when we do mitigation, it's kind of like Chincapin Run Park. Only the trees that are of a certain caliber or a certain diameter have to be replaced, and we do that on the basis of planting of the volume based on caliber inch of the new plantings. But in a case like this, where this is a street tree that doesn't meet that minimum diameter requirement, there's nothing stopping the arborist from saying, despite this being below the size, that under another circumstance, we would require a per-caliber-inch replacement, we're going to allow you to take this down if you mitigate in this way. There's nothing stopping the city from allowing that, right?
Madam Chair, if I could try to answer the councilman's question. So what the bill does is it does a couple of things. It creates a standard in which this bill gets triggered or this law gets triggered, that is an eight-inch caliber at breast height. And so that's, you know, yay tree. Your genko, if it's 14 years old, might be bigger than eight inches, in which case, this bill does kick in and you would have to figure out a replacement for that, and it would be inch-by-inch caliber. So you can get a large, two larger trees or something, or an equivalently large tree, which may be difficult. One of the things we're going to discuss, and there is going to be a conversation here shortly about amendments to the bill and how we would consider potentially a situation like this, where this might go to the city forester or to the director to determine whether or not said tree is just not a good fit for that area and should be removed for other reasons. And they can be considered in that way. So the bill aims to figure out when it should be triggered, eight-inch caliber at breast height, and then in instances where it may be a gray area, where we might want to remove the tree otherwise, giving someone the decision, ability to make that decision.
Thank you. It's, so just to...
Well, I just want to offer just a point of clarification on that. For street trees, we're actually, we enforce this for all street trees. Eight-inch and up is like in Chincapin in the park. That's what we've done, so that's what is in this bill. But for street trees, it is, we will look at smaller trees as well. And that, the reason, and I mentioned earlier, is because a lot of times, those trees are actually planted as mitigation for other tree removals. Many times, they are, including even trees that are planted by community groups, may even be funded by mitigation dollars that we've collected for other tree removals. So that's why we look at that. But it, you know, for this specific situation, it's not, I don't, this bill doesn't change any of the way that forestry would, would approach this.
All right. So then it would be reasonable for me to follow up on this email that I sent to Dan Coy a month ago, where he said, no, there's no path for us to allow this guy to replace this tree?
Yeah. Councilman, if, Tyler Chanel from the mayor's office, if you can just include me on that and then we can address that specific constituent issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Can we go over the, the committee received amendments earlier this morning? Can we review the three amendments from the administration?
Yes. So the First Amendment, Michelle, do you want to speak to the definition ones from the Law Department? The, we put, we put in two amendments. The one, First Amendment defines breast height to mean four and a half feet off of the ground. The second one defines caliber inch means six inches off of the ground. It was mentioned in the bill, but the definitions weren't explicitly stated. So on advice of the Law Department, we put that amendment in there. On Amendment Number Two, if you, so when you open up the text, let me pull up the actual language, sorry. Oh, yeah. So I just want to read the actual language. So page four, line 14, "A person may not remove a tree in or along a public street without first having been issued a written permit to do so by the Department of Recreation and Parks." We are amending that to say unless authorized, unless otherwise authorized in writing by the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks or their designee, "A person may not remove a tree in or along a public street without first having been issued a written permit to do so." So that will allow for, in those instances, like we just discussed, where there's a specific constituent issue or something like that, that the Director of Recreation and Parks or their designee, being the city arborist or Director of the Forestry Division, could authorize the removal without a permit. And then the, I want to say that was the, last amendment was the exemption from mitigation requirements for street trees. We had it in there for the park trees, and then Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, where the Department of Recreation and Parks may exempt the tree from the mitigation requirements of this subsection if the Department of Recreation and Parks determines that the tree is dead, dying, diseased, or otherwise infected and contagious, or at high risk of death, disease, or failure, as determined by the Baltimore City Forestry Division of the Department of Recreation and Parks. So it's just also put in that requirement, that exemption in for street trees as well.
Thank you. I want to welcome Councilman James Torrance here. Did you have any questions at this time? Okay. You have the floor.
And this is for the Law Department, because I had this issue with a resident in Hampton, where we went back and forth for six months for him to get permission from forestry to cut and prune a tree back that was causing damage to his property. Have we created a, will this permit go through instead of Wreckin' Parks through housing so that we have a self-help permit that we can track to know how many people are actually doing it? Because I'm just being frank, forestry is well behind on maintenance, and this was causing thousands of dollars of damage. And it took me having to elevate it to the mayor's office for forestry to come and actually do the work after he requested it two years prior. So I just want to make sure that like, we may put this exception in, but how will it be operationalized from the administration and tracked? Because forestry is, I believe, two years behind on SRS in maintenance, and we're on an eight-year schedule for maintenance of actual street trees. So I just want to make sure, how can our residents do self-help and it's tracked so we know how far we are behind and what residents are actually lending in to help us with?
I'm not sure that this is a question really for law, because as I understand it, this bill is codifying an existing procedure. I believe the language of the bill would be broad enough for a resident to be able to apply for a permit. You don't think so?
There's no permit in the process, right? So we went back and forth asking for a permit between David Coy for months. There was no actual permit process established at the agency, right? So we went back and forth. So that's why I'm asking, while we may codify this, how is this operationalized? Because me sending an email to someone who did not respond for six months is not a way in which we are being, that is not customer service. So I just want to make sure as our, as our attorney, because people can sue us for self-help if something does happen to their property, how do we lower the city's liability in terms of making sure this is operationalized and we can track it?
Therein, I think, lies why I said this may not be an issue for law, because under the language in this bill, you can apply for a permit to remove a tree. Whether there actually is an existing permit process or not is not something law would have any control over.
We'll follow up, Councilman.
Can we follow up with risk management as well? Because this is more than just, this is broader from a legal scope, because there's the self-help rules that we have in terms of doing it ourselves. I've cut back trees myself in my neighborhood, but I've had a resident who's had a car demolished because of a tree limb falling after six years of complaining to the city. So while we say we have the process, there is no process. I think that as accountability for, and I think this is a committee request, Madam Chair, is that when we do pass this bill out, that we have a established permit process, understanding who are the approvers and what queue it goes through, whether it goes through the new permit system through housing or Wreckin' Parks's actual special events office. It has to be some tracking mechanism, because forestry has fell short of the bell toll.
Got it.
Are there any additional comments or questions regarding the bill? You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The question that I have around Amendment Number Two, I know there have been a lot of questions around stream restorations around the city, and I'm curious how Amendment Number Two would affect decisions around stream restorations, particularly in cases where there might be a disagreement between an agency like DPW and Wreckin' Parks around the removal of trees in order to do a project. How might this be evaluated in the system? I just want to make sure that those decisions are not made without, you know, fair consideration to forests with expertise, hopefully from forestry, in making the ultimate decision on whether or not to move forward with said projects.
Well, I think in general, it, by codifying our policy, it makes it stronger and may, may help with that regard if like, if maybe a stream project's going to, you know, proposing to remove a lot of forest and we're in disagreement with that, this could help. I'm not sure if it changes that, that much with regard to the stream projects. I mean, DPW has their interest in that. It's on our land. I don't think it, I don't think it makes it easier. I don't, I hope not.
I just, I want to make sure that in these instances, there is some expertise and hopefully some carefulness around decisions for stream restoration projects. I have one happening in my district at the moment. Folks are really up in arms about it. And, you know, thankfully to the partnership with the administration, we were able to significantly reduce the amount of trees that would have been removed, and we're still trying to figure out some of the details there. But I want to make sure that the folks who are thinking about the trees in the forest are the people who have an opportunity to weigh in when those decisions are made. DPW may not necessarily be concerned at all with trees. They're worried about stormwater. They're worried about physical infrastructure. And while that is absolutely important, it needs to be addressed, you guys should be worried about the trees. And I want to make sure that they do have some influence or say ultimately in those decisions. And I don't want, I'll say this, and this is obvious, I don't want this to just... And I don't want, I'll say this, and this is obvious, I don't want this to just be lean on the director, and the director has to fold, because, you know, he sits on the cabinet. I don't, I don't want that to happen. I want this to be a sensible, reasonable opportunity for feedback.
Absolutely. And that is why we tweaked that amendment to be the director or the director's designee. And the thought behind that is, when we have agency heads, obviously, they are advised by their division leaders, or their bureau heads, or, you know, whatever the case may be, so that they are making well-informed decisions, right? Our leaders do not make decisions, our agency leaders don't make decisions in a vacuum, right? And so we don't legislate under that guise that like, oh, there may come a situation where a leader would just say, oh, just do this. And they haven't been properly informed by the subject meta-experts within their agencies. And so again, that's why we did the director or the director's designee. And other pieces, I want to be very clear that, as Matt gave an example earlier, is that Wrecking Parks will always do its best to ensure that there is minimal disturbance in removal of trees where it's absolutely not necessary, right? And he gave the example of how they worked with DOT to scale back the removal of however many trees they wanted to do, and found a way to still complete that project and not cut down swaths of trees, right? So they're going to continue to do that work. Nothing in this legislation prohibits them from doing that work or handicaps them. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record, that we will ensure that, again, Wrecking Parks is able to, as they look at these projects, have input and help to make adjustments and, you know, why don't you consider doing this instead of doing this, right? And then it can help to reduce the number of trees that through these projects, be it DPW, or DOT, or whoever that we're cutting down in our city.
And I just want to add to that, I think you bring up a really great point, Councilman Conway, in that this bill specifically, as Matt spoke, to addresses the issues of trees. But sometimes there are different climate goals that may seem to be in competition with one another. And I think there's an opportunity here in our office. We do want to reach out and have a conversation with DPW and bring in BCRP about how we balance the trade-offs between stream restoration and preserving our tree canopy. That's a really important point. And we just have to acknowledge that there are typically trade-offs in many of these decisions, and we have to figure out what are the trade-offs that we are willing to accept and which that we are not. I don't think we're getting to that level of specificity in this particular bill, but it's a great point. And we can keep the committee up to date as to our conversations with DPW about that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And if I could just, I just want to say, I like what you said. I agree with that. And having, I think, considering the environment with these projects, it, that should be done. And that's something we want to be done. It hasn't been done, but it should be. I mean, with regard to stream restorations, even the working group that oversees that MS4 accrediting system, at least since 2018, has recommended that you don't do these projects in forested areas. So there's that, you know, I, I just want to mention that because stream restorations came up, but forests are important. So, thank you.
I just wanted to point out, the existing law in section 53-2 not only gives jurisdiction to Wrecking Parks for these trees, but it also requires the other agencies strictly observe the provisions. So I believe the language is already in there to address the issue you're raising.
Thank you all. We're going to move to public testimony. Those who are in attendance virtually, please raise your hand so that we can identify you to speak. We're going to hear from folks who are within the chambers. You will have three minutes to provide your testimony each. Once you come to the mic, please provide your first and your last name, and include an organization, if you are, if you are with an organization and not just speaking for yourself. First, we have Kathleen Jones. Kathleen Jones. Okay, we're going to move to Jess Ahart. No? Okay. Darren Crew.
Good evening, council members. I'm Darren Crew, Director of Restoration, Blue Water Baltimore, proud resident of the Beverly Hills neighborhood. We're in support of this bill. Blue Water Baltimore is about clean water, strong communities. We do street tree plantings in neighborhoods like Broadway East, Oliver, and so those trees are important to communities. We've also done a lot of park plantings over time with students, high school students. We've planted in Chincapin Run. Councilman Dorsey brought up the sewer line project that DPW did. The newly planted trees were not, would not be covered on this, but luckily, because of the rule of the eight-inch replacement, we had a number of trees replaced. I'd like to point out that this policy that we're formally, going to formalize, puts us ahead of Baltimore County. So we're government by example, we're leading the way to grow our tree canopy. We would love to see you guys pass this and codify it to help grow our trees and support tree canopy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Katie Lauter.
Hi, I'm Katie Lauter, the Executive Director of Baltimore Greenspace. And on behalf of Baltimore Greenspace, I encourage you to make a favorable report on City Council Bill 230465. This bill will provide legal protections for city trees grounding the current city policy and formal legislation. We all know that Baltimore City has many special green spaces and parks and tree canopy that help to cool communities and manage stormwater. Baltimore City Forestry's Tree Baltimore Partnerships are one of the few partnerships in the United States that can boast a tree canopy gain due to the efforts of strong planting and conservation partnerships. We have a network of cooperating partners and communities, and some of those partners you will see provide testimony here. Baltimore Greenspace recently embarked on a mapping analysis to inform our conservation plan strategy. We chose to look at the intersection of community access, cooling impacts, and flooding impacts of green spaces in Baltimore City, from pocket parks to forest patches. What we see is that tree canopy has measurable and noticeable cooling effects, from street trees to trees over grass to forest patches. But forest patches are the best at cooling communities, and a significant portion of these patches are in parks. Now, more than ever in the era of climate change, we need more protections ensuring that we not only reach, but exceed the city's 40% tree canopy goal. We were able to move from 27% to 28%, but we need to continue to move the needle faster. A denser tree canopy has stronger cooling benefits and stormwater benefits. A conservation, our conservation planning with scientific partners, looking at flooding patterns as compared to tree canopy, impervious cover, and green space ratios, seems to indicate that neighborhoods with a higher than 40% tree canopy are less likely to have flooding impacts. So while we are making gains in canopy, it's possible that our bar was set a little lower than we actually needed to be for climate resilience and cushioning communities, as these rain patterns produce more flood risks. Also, forest patches are better at managing stormwater, and a significant number of these patches are in parks. So in addition, we would request that you consider making the director of forestry the person who reviews these permits in the amendment, as it's pretty usual in other cities to have the director of forestry have that kind of permitting powers. And I can say this, having reviewed many different types of legislation on the matter. Anyway, so we respectfully request a favorable report on City Council Bill 230465, codifying this policy, because it both protects the city from possible challenges to previous mitigation rates, and it keeps us moving the canopy forward. Thank you for your dedication and service to the greater good of Baltimore.
Thank you. Amanda Cunningham.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before the council. I'm reading a letter that was prepared by Eric Deal, who is a former city arborist for Baltimore City. He was unable to attend today, but asked me as a...
Ma'am, can you please state your first and last name, and if you're with an organization, please?
My name is Amanda Cunningham. I'm on the board of the Baltimore City Forest Conservation District Board with Eric Deal, who is our chair. Unfortunately, he could not attend the meeting today and asked me to read his testimony in his stead. Dear Councilmember McCray and committee members, we wholeheartedly support Bill 23-0465 as written and encourage their prompt inclusion into Baltimore City code. The Baltimore City Forestry Board, created by the Maryland State Legislature, was formed to protect and enhance city trees and forest parklands, and to educate and encourage the public on the benefits of our tree canopy, and to engage our children through such programs as Arbor Day, Earth Day, and the Maryland Natural Resources Career Camp. As retired city arborist for Baltimore, I remain proud of the city's efforts to mitigate tree loss caused by construction, destruction, or development. The current policy to replace trees in kind has been in place for close to 10 years and has resulted in commendable reforestation after severe loss from such projects as gas pipelines, sanitary sewer repair, and building development. Bill 230465 will further codify Baltimore's exemplary practice. In addition, creating a sustainability fund as a repository for mitigation funds, when fees in lieu must occur in place of replacing a tree at the time of the project, is an excellent idea. We all can be confident such a fund, separate from other line items in Baltimore's budget, will be used exclusively for tree planting, care, and enhancement of our forests. I and my fellow board members are proud of our respective neighborhoods and Baltimore City's efforts to promote trees in our parks and along our streets. We encourage you to continue to embrace the fact that trees are a critical part of our forest ecosystems to combat climate change, and that they lower our utility bills, provide a sense of peace and wellness for our citizens, and are a welcome respite for our children. Signed sincerely, Eric Deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy Smith.
Good morning. Yeah, my name is Tracy Smith. I'm a board member with the Friends of Herring Run. And we're an organization that is representing a constituency of people who are interested in using the park, and who want to see the park maintained as well as possible, and would like the park to be positioned for optimal use for our families for years to come. We appreciate the thoughtfulness and attention to detail directed at this legislation. We also appreciate your efforts to develop and implement policy to manage parks after construction projects. We see it as a mindset which needs continuous reinforcement. We believe this legislation, and hopefully future legislation will support the concept of seeking no net tree loss in Baltimore City, as well as continuous growing of Baltimore's tree canopy and other flora in parks and public green spaces. That's my message. Thanks.
Thank you. And last we have Ryan Austin.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Ryan Austin. I am Communications Director for Baltimore Tree Trust. I am also a resident of the Midtown East Community. I'd like you for a moment to imagine Baltimore City in July. Picture yourself walking around a lush park full of trees and feel the sun beaming on your skin. Now, picture yourself walking through a neighborhood with no trees, no green spaces, no parks. Imagine the intense heat and the beaming sun that you face now. It's been proven that neighborhoods without trees can be approximately 10 degrees hotter than tree-lined streets. This phenomenon, called the urban heat island effect, is exactly what Baltimore Tree Trust and other organizations are working to combat. Trees directly correlate to the public health of a community, and to mitigate urban heat island effect, trees are the best solution. Trees are critical infrastructure. If we want to counter the effect of urban heat island effect and climate change, we need trees, both new and existing, which is what this bill works to protect. Growing an urban tree canopy requires a massive investment in planting, community care, time, and labor. Growing small saplings into mature, self-sustaining trees takes considerable effort and resources, and we cannot shortchange Baltimore communities or this investment in our organizations by not having basic protection for our trees. Urban forestry is booming. There are millions of dollars flowing into Baltimore to plant trees, to grow saplings into mature trees, and to create the jobs and workforce needed to do this important work. Baltimore, its nonprofits, and its residents are nationally recognized as leaders in urban tree planting efforts. In 2023, Baltimore Tree Trust planted 3,227 trees, all of which 80% were on public property and right-ofways. The fact that these trees can and have been cut down without regard, permits, or a plan to replace them, erases the investments and benefits these trees could have for the community. When vacant homes are torn down, the streets are torn down, the street trees are torn down alongside them, and the tree wells are filled in. When utility work is being done, the trees are removed without a thought. When traffic cameras are put up, trees in the right-of-way are removed and never replaced. When trees are removed from our parks and schools, there is no guarantee they will be replanted. This bill will establish a provision that when healthy and productive trees are removed, they must be replaced. It will help preserve Baltimore's urban tree canopy from shrinking. It will make sure that the groups investing in Baltimore know that we are not just a leader in planting new trees, but that we will stand up to protect the trees that are planted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else within the chambers who would like to testify who didn't get a chance to sign in? Okay. We do not have anyone on, online who would like to test and, excuse me, testify, I apologize. So that's going to conclude public testimony. For this particular hearing, we will be announcing a work session regarding the amendments at the next city council meeting. I do thank everyone for joining us today. Thank you.